Our our education is three zero three. Our our education is three zero three. School board shall give you a little bit of a policy to say. Growth and employment evaluation. To a degree it also says about policies. Talking about purchasing. I adopted the role of the show. And then E three oh six um if not four or three oh six take a look. This is the major standards. The asset. Yeah, we have. Um what is the question? E three oh six four oh four. Yes, the policy. That's enough. Seven policies. Everything's on that. So um. Page three in addition to. You know that there is. The ones I have. Politically. Washington. So we know that. A lot of. Know the legislature. So um policy. First day. Is it about policy? Policy. Policies. He said. That's his basis. Policy. Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? Amazing. This is um. So. Yeah, absolutely. Certified staff means any position um that by law requires the person to have a certification. By the state. So the teachers, yeah, certified. Principal.
Librarians.
Yeah, librarians.
Our teacher.
Right, an- any, any teacher. So when we say certified staff, in order to be employed in the district, you have to have a certification from the Department of Education. You know, saying you met the criteria to be a teacher.
For the licensed.
Yeah, right, exactly. Thank you.
That would have would not include.
Correct, correct. Um, right, your non-certified staff are gonna be your food service workers, your custodians, your bear professionals. Um, secretaries, other administrative staff, things like that.
So it's embarrassing practice um where it it um it can get um sort of a gray area or it can get. You know, interesting is is where you have situations where a superintendent, you know, recommends a certain level of staffing. This is sort of, we've gone over the mechanics of hiring.
Yeah.
Um, as laypeople, we don't know how many, I'll speak myself, how many of X, Y, Z staff we need teachers.
Right.
Um, is there ways? I mean, it it seems like, I mean, that's more of a superintendent expertise with superintendent and his or her staff. How do we, how do we, how do we prevent conflicts from happening?
Good question. Um, you know, the first thing that I would always recommend is take a look at your class size policy. Another good example, what policy?
We don't have one of those.
We didn't have one.
We don't have. Yeah, but we don't have one.
It's twenty five.
The state, yeah.
Says no more than.
The state minimum standards are twenty five for elementary school, thirty for high school. Um, and that's, again, that's minimum standards. So the board is through policy or practice, you can lower that if you want. Most boards would say, you know, a lot of boards through policy will just have the minimum standards, but in practice, they actually try and keep it a li- a little bit lower. Um, so if you, as a board, want to say, you know what, we're gonna have a policy, twenty two kids for elementary school, you can do that. Um, you have to be mindful, though, that in some case, some situations, it may not be, it may not always be able to be actualized.
Right.
So let's say you have, I'm just gonna use wrong numbers, okay? Let's say you have a policy of twenty kids. No, your kindergartens are gonna be no more than twenty kids. So that's five teachers, right? Well, if you have a hundred and four kids in kindergarten, you're not gonna go hide, I mean, you could if you wanted to, but you're looking at another hundred thousand dollars in your budget then to hire two. And then re- the reality would, you'd have six teachers per hundred and four kids, which is gonna drop you down to, what, fifteen or sixteen class size? So you understand that, you know. So the first thing I would, I would look at, if you're looking at, at your staffing numbers, look at your student population. And you can get a breakdown. We've got, you know, five second grade teachers, five third grade teachers, uh, whatever they may be. Look at your student populations. Talk to your administrators about what they believe would be inadequate and reasonable um staffs or class size.
Right.
Um, you know, look at, um, another thing to look at, look at your, called quote unquote specials in high school. Um, you know, do you like to offer AP courses here?
Online.
Online. So I was talking to a superintendent today and in, they having some declining enrollment, some challenges, and they offered, you know, AP courses. Whatever's AP chemistry. But depending on the, the size of the class, there've been years they've had three, four kids taking it. Is it, you know, is it, is that a beneficial use of the staff time to be teaching three or four kids?
See, that's the, so that's, that's the rub, right?
Yeah.
So here, we were so small, we would have AP courses with four or five kids, and those kids were scoring fours and fives.
Right.
So now we have them on V-Lax.
Yeah.
And they're not even finishing the course.
Yeah.
So, so this is a part, one of my big rubs. I do like small class sizes, and I do want that twenty five, I don't like, because some of our classrooms are so small.
Right.
And knowing, I didn't even hear the high school at thirty. We were, policy was twenty five.
Minimum standards say high school would be thirty.
Didn't even hear that.
Yeah.
So what I, I vetoed that policy because I wanna keep our class sizes low because they're so small, they're so hot.
And that's a policy determined. I mean, the other thing, too, I know that the building is old, right? Isn't the building ninety years old or something?
It won't be next year.
It won't be. Well, I mean, the other thing.
It's having a renaissance.
Right, I mean, well, but, you know, ninety. Eight or ninety years ago, the, the visit, the square footage in the classroom may be smaller than what would be typical today. There may be fire code issues.
Well, that, you know, this, this goes, I think, to a broader concept, and, and class size is such a loaded concept, and I think it's at the end of a visioning process.
Correct.
Right?
Right.
I mean, it's, you did, you, what, what's our goal and what, what class sizes fit, fit that?
Right.
Perfect.
Right. And the other thing that you might wanna do, NHSBA doesn't do this just because we don't have the capacity, but um, you know, if you wanted to do a full study of like, what we think would be the appropriate class size. You know, you can hire consultants to come in and do studies of your student population and how many classrooms you have and how many square footage, you know, is in your building and what your staffing size are. So, you know, you can get some, you can get the data, and then you can compare it to similar sized districts or districts of similar sized budgets or whatever the case may be.
I mean, and I think.
All, all that data is available online.
Yeah.
Only when you get a budget from me, you'll have your average class sizes anyways.
Right, thank you.
Because students drive staff.
That's.
Yeah.
Drive dollars.
That's exactly.
So um if you're not getting that information on enrollments and staffing, um, then how, am I really clear how you would approach putting the budget together?
Well, in understanding that, cause I.
Right.
That is right. Everything you just said, I was like, oh, well, that makes sense.
And again, I mean, those are, again, that, those are, you know, why policy is so important, that's within your purview.
Yes.
You know, um, and, you know, you don't necessarily have to have a policy on AP courses per se, but you can have a policy on class size. You can, you know, make affirmative statements as to what you want the educational experience in Newmarket to be and what courses you wanna offer. Um, you know, obviously, there are considerations, a bunch of it, and, you know, staff time and things of that nature, but that's, that's why you better let it to make those, to make those decisions.
Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Any other questions while we're just sort of going through?
I did have one.
Yeah.
So um, education three oh three point zero one B, adopt policies unnecessary, desirable to control and effectuate.
Yeah.
The purchase of equipment, supplies, and services. I think our policy, yes, our policy.
We're on page three.
I'm on page three of twenty, at the very top. We have a policy that if it's under ten thousand, we, you don't have to come see us.
Purchasing.
Yeah, we have several policies about purchasing, if so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's pretty, that's pretty typical. I mean. You know, I don't know what an average purchase, you know, but I can imagine there are times you're gonna have a five thousand dollar purchase from W D Mason or whatever. You can't go back to the school board every time you need to, you need to be able to do that. And there's proper oversight, you know, you're signing the manifest, somebody's checking the books, and you've got a DA that's keeping track of the, of the ledger and, and the, you know? And the.
Working on that.
I'm hoping we're gonna get one.
Another Renaissance area.
That, that's interesting, yeah. And I just, that popped up to me, and I thought, we've had that policy, but did we get in trouble for that in the last few years? And I don't know, anyway, that was my, it's an interesting.
Any other questions while we're?
Absolutely.
Alright, so we got this, a policy is sort of the, the primary, and, and we'll, we'll circle back to policy as well, too. Um, on my page, moving it to B, on my page, it's my page three, it's your page.
Three.
Four, I believe, three, the bottom of page three on your, your copy. Um, establish the school district budget and provide budget oversight. Um, you know, while ultimately the budget, we know that the budget is approved by the voters. But the board is, you know, responsible for establishing, unless you have a budget committee in here, is that, are they responsible? You do what?
Yeah.
Is it their budget?
Yes.
Okay, so if you're, if you have a budget committee, we know it's, it's their budget and they put it together and they present it at the annual meeting night.
It's our budget.
It's our budget.
It's our budget.
They approve.
Oh, okay, okay. Every town I'm in that has a budget committee does.
Oh, you'll get time.
Yeah.
It's a good time. You're gonna love it.
Yeah. So in New Hampshire, we have a provision in law that allows for towns to adopt, it's called a municipal budget committee. Um, and that is a separate elected political body. Um, they operate differently in each town. There's, I don't know, only there are probably, I don't know, I'm gonna say at least half the school districts in the state, if not more, have one, probably similar on the town side as well, too. So in these communities where the, where the town has, has voted through the warrant article process to, to adopt a budget committee. Um, in, in, in some towns, again, I can't speak to how it is here in, in Newmarket, in some towns, that budget committee has control over the school district budget. Yes, they set the budget, they establish the budget, sometimes it's collaborative with the school board, sometimes it's not.
How is this work? How is this work? When citizens look at the budget, they'll say the school board approved the budget, uh, to, the, uh, budget committee did not approve the budget, a budget.
Right.
Budget.
But it's your budget.
It's our budget. It's our budget.
But they won't vote for it if the budget committee doesn't.
If the budget committee throws up a, a flag.
Yeah.
Um, I think the budget, I think the general population will tend to look at it.
Sure, sure, sure. And I think that's pretty typical in most towns with, with that budget. Um, make friends with those people.
They can't make you, they can't tell you how to change your budget, but they will look at you and say, take it up forty off that. If, if they're unhappy.
And we may not listen.
Yes. We don't have to listen, and again, then it's voted on and they don't like it. But the last few years, we've had a great relationship with them.
Yeah.
We present our budget to.
The board.
And then they sit down and we explain to them why we're adding three teachers and.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's turned into a pretty collaborative.
Good.
It was not years ago, but right now.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that you wanna.
And, and she's right, you know, make friends with the budget.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
It, it's not necessarily completely different than when it was.
Oh, okay.
Good.
Good.
So our process is that the school committee is autonomous in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
And so the budget is, the school committee is like it, it sounds like it to me here. Um, and the school committee goes there, through their budget. Of course, we keep liaisons with the town budget committees, we call them finance committees there.
Yeah.
Once we adopt, then we go before the finance committees and we explain that. They, they take action to either support or, or not the budget, and it goes before town meeting.
Yep.
Exactly it. Exactly it.
It sounds very similar.
Mm-hmm.
And we can cha- our town can change it. They can stand up during, during the deliberative stage.
You change it. I know, man, those. The voters can amend the budget from the floor.
Yep.
But we, yeah, we're gonna have to teach you all that. Yeah, yeah.
We can say, but they can say, I'd make a motion that we reduce the budget by hundred thousand dollars. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Let's reduce.
That's why we've had to fill the, the town deliberative has been filled over the years because it has happened.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
Um.
Good tax.
Yeah. And in addition to the budget committee, just some practical advice, you can also get to know the town council, the town, the select board here. And, you know, I don't wanna say coordinate your budget, but, you know, if you have an increase coming in this year, talk to them and make sure they're not looking to buy a fire truck the same year, right? See if you can stagger that so the public isn't getting hit, you know, all at once, so. Um, but getting to know the, the town council or the, the town, the select board and the, um, and, and the budget committee people, I think, would be, would be prudent.
We've really.
Particularly in C I P.
Yeah, we've C I Ps.
C I P's huge.
Yeah.
C I P. CIP.
If you're planning on, they're planning on buying a million dollar fire truck, which they could, and you wanna put a million dollars in the air conditioning in the school, you better.
That's exactly right.
And we serve, uh, uh, I've served on it for, I think it's my seventh year, but um it's the same deal, you sit down, you understand the issues and, and agree or disagree about what's the priority. Go for both, you won't get it.
That's exactly.
Can we have, are we allowed to have like a get to know Susan gathering? As long as we don't top shock.
You can, you can do that without it being.
Maybe we can invite CIP budget town and just.
Absolutely.
It's a thought. I love a party.
Coffee, I'll let Susan.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Alright.
Okay.
Put that on my list.
It's good because she doesn't have much in her schedule.
I know.
Yeah, right.
And, and you know, you know, I would, I would reiterate, we talked about the other day, the board's got a really good relationship with the CIP.
In the budget.
And we really do, it's, it was the Hatfields and McCoys nine years ago, and we were shooting guns at each other and it doesn't take much.
Umbrellas. I had an umbrella.
Yeah, it doesn't take much just to take the time for one of us, you don't have to do it all, to sit down with the budget committee cause one of us is gonna be serving on it. One of us is gonna be serving.
The school board has a liaison to, to the budget.
Actually, that's a good time to meet budget and see, you can take it to CIP, like we could, you, yeah, we could do that.
It's, it's, it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Good. Um and then, so we talked about, you know, establish the, the budget, provide budget oversight. Um I imagine there's budget work at every single meeting, you're looking at lineups, you're looking at reviewing expenses, you're looking at the, the manifest and the ledger and signing off on those sorts of things, so it's not like you just set the budget and you know, January, the votes vote on it in March, then you're done with it, it's, it's constant. Um and then listing some of the, some of the pertinent depart- uh pertinent statutes and um, and Department of Education uh regulations and the, the Department of Revenue Administration. Susan, just for you, the Department of Revenue Administration is the state entity that sets the tax rate every year. Um you know, they, they, I, it's on the bottom of page three of my copy, talking about page four.
We're gonna get to it in a copy.
She's making work of it. So at the bottom of our page three is establish the district's budget.
Yeah, and then the last bullet point here, Department of Revenue Administration. That's the, that's the entity that basically sets the tax rate. You send, at the end of the, the annual meeting, you send them, for, obviously forums, you gotta solve, what's the budget that was appropriated? Or that wasn't voted on by the voters and they'll have, they have all the money relative to property evaluation, so then they ascertain this is what you're getting the state aid, this is what you need to raise locally, this is what your property tax rate's going to be in order to raise the money for the supporting public schools.
And the superintendent does that or the SBA does that?
Um, the central office will do it, so the BA and the superintendent will probably do it.
And we sign it at the end of the.
Yeah, the board has to sign off on it, but, and you know, technically, I think, technically, I think it's the board that, that does it cause they're all doing the responsible, but you know, the work is gonna be done into your business office. Questions on that? Alright, um the next one, this is important, especially with a new superintendent, evaluate the superintendent. This is on page four of mine, I guess.
Page, it is page four of ours as well.
Evaluate the superintendent, um there are lots of reasons why you have to, you know, evaluate the superintendent. First, obviously, is there's a legal reason. The first bullet point, Department of Education Rule three oh three point zero one K states clearly that school board shall annually evaluate the superintendent. Um we talked about school board policy, NHSBA has a sample policy that says we're gonna evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis. And then the last, you know, legal obligation, um I haven't seen Susan's contract, but I've seen a lot of superintendent contracts across the state and over fifteen years at NHSBA, everyone I've ever seen has a provision that says they're gonna be evaluated on an annual basis.
And when is ours due? Do we have to have it done by October or do, oh, we'll change?
Or contracts.
Yeah.
I think we said that we would set my goals by October.
It's in the contract, I can call the executive.
Let, let, let me talk about that a, a little bit. If I'm doing this presentation with a, a longstanding, you know, chief superintendent, I wanna skip over this a little bit. But with, with you being new, Susan, I wanna, um, I wanna touch on, touch base on this a little bit. Um first thing, you already mentioned the goal setting, or the, what, what goals are gonna be established for you, Susan. Um you know, NHSBA recommends that before you can even talk about an evaluation, you have to set any goals as well too. And those goals then drive the evaluation, right, otherwise, what are you evaluating on, it's gonna be nebulous at best. Um the other reason that you wanna do goal setting at the front end of this, especially within a new superintendent, is you need to be clear. The board needs to be clear with Susan about what the expectations are. Likewise, Susan, just as any employee does, has a right to know what those expectations are. And that needs to be, that needs to be made clear. And the goal setting ideally is gonna be a collaborative conversation. Um you know, I recommend that you sit down, you contract's in October, whenever you have time, you know, over the summer, you start having that conversation now. And you have to be frank with one another, you know, Susan, you have to say, yeah, I think I can do these things that you want me to do. These others, you know, I can try, but the reality is I don't know if, if I can, if I can do those in this year. And the board has to be mindful of what capacity and resources there are. Um you know, an example, I was talking to a superintendent last week and they were doing the, the, the goal setting for this coming school year and, and one, one board member had a list of like thirteen things that he wanted. Done. And the superintendent said, well, this is, this is, first of all, these aren't goals, this is like a to-do list more than anything. And, and he said, I can't, but I said, I, I, I can't, he said, I can do thirteen of these, but each one is gonna be half-assed. If you wanna give me four or five of them, I can do well, you know, so and then they had the conversation about that, but um do the goal setting upfront. Um the other thing I recommend too, in terms of the evaluation, especially with a, a new superintendent. Um you know, a lot of boards won't do much of anything in this vein, they won't do the goal setting. And then it's the middle of May and they sit down and say, okay, Susan, we're doing your evaluation tonight. And you know, and so they have a ten-page form, they're trying to fill it out right then and there. I recommend doing a series of mini evaluations throughout the course of the year, get those goals set. Um benchmark some of them, or Susan, what can you have done by Thanksgiving, what can you have done by New Year's, what can you have done by annual meeting, what can you have done by the end of the school year? And you have check, and you don't have to, they don't have to be all affirmative, formal evaluations, you know, each time. But, you know, and the reality is you're gonna be evaluated every, every school board meeting, right?
I, I like it, I like the, the check-ins, I like that because you can tell us.
Every two or three months.
Lay off.
Right. You know, well, ev- every two or three months, I think, alright, we're gonna, let's, you know, we benchmark these three for, I'm just gonna use October as an example. And then you check in, where are we, how's it going, what support do you need, what resources do you need, do we need to pivot off of these? Um this, cause I've seen too many boards, you know, wait until, like I said, the middle of May. And, and, and you know, there may have been something that the board didn't like in October. You didn't bring it up then, you know, and, like, why are you telling me six months later in an evaluation that you didn't like the way I did something in October? When we could've had a conversation in October about it, so. Um the other thing too about the evaluation process, um it, it, it needs to be, it, it needs to be collaborative. The goal setting needs to be collaborative, the tool that you're going to use needs to be collaborative. You don't wanna use a tool that doesn't accurately re- reflect what you wanna measure. And likewise, Susan should have some say in what tool's going to be used to make sure she understands how the evaluation is going to go. Um I will also tell you, I'm happy to do some research on this for you, I have yet to see an evaluation tool that I think is really good. I mean, I've researched this for, for years, I've contacted the other forty-nine state school boards associations, can you send me what you have, what are you using? You know, I sent out emails on the listservs that I have with attorneys from all over the country that do school law. And I don't know why, but I, I haven't found one that I really like yet.
We use a different one every.
And, and we str- we struggle with that as well too, so.
I think if you look at the recent one, the school board set out, it was a new one.
Yeah, we, we did that one a couple of years ago.
I think it's terrible.
Yeah, I, I.
And it's in our policy book and, but the trouble to me is it says this is the one.
Yeah.
No, we, we, we held off on that out, we held off on it, we don't, we did adopt one, we did adopt one. There were several that were in there, we did not adopt one.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with you, Al, and I'm, I'm trying to, you know, part of the challenge for NHSBA coming up with a model is um you know, the same model is not going to work in every school.
I was gonna say, every district is so different.
And, and I think it's, it's, it's more than the form, I think it begins with the goal setting, it begins with the collaboration of the goal setting, it begins with the check-in. So the paper exists, but it's not existing in a vacuum.
Exactly.
And municipalities aren't alone. I've never seen in my corporate life ones that were particularly.
In, in what way are they wanting, I mean, what, what's, what's.
Number one, they're, they're, if you look at the state one, it's so um cerebral.
Rigid.
It's long.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with you, you know, here are the four things, they're, they're really important this year.
Right.
And we all know what they are and it's getting the BA office up and running to a Saturday, you know, we can.
Yeah.
Um I, that's my, at least my experience, they just, we need to sit down and just grab a manageable group of things.
That's what you do at the retreats.
And I think that's what we're gonna do on Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, and.
The next, the next.
In, in ability during the year to say, you know, something priorities have changed.
That's exactly right.
All of a sudden, we had a teacher's, teacher's strike and.
I, I think, um, I, I would just emphasize. Said about the, about the check-ins.
Yeah.
Because um it, 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 you know, it doesn't, it doesn't do anybody any good to hold back, I mean, you know, we gotta. And, and, and actually, and it's not, it, it's, 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 I see this more as a positive thing.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just, hey, you didn't do this or does.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is more of a.
Yeah. No, if you go back and if, if we had handled, say, an October event differently, if we had sat down, had a retreat, what could we have done differently the next time, right? Like that would have maybe made things easier in the last two years.
To those of us that have experienced with that, if we addressed the budget issue, the budget presentation.
Yeah.
The next day.
The follow, well, just not even the next, well, I know you, but if we as a board, not individually, as a board, sat down, had a retreat, said, here's what we'd like to see next year, no blame.
Yeah.
Just, things could've been, maybe things would've gone differently.
Could I just ask a quick question, really of the board, so your performance review expectation is when? But I mean, it's, it's, ta- take a guess.
I think October.
So let's say it's October. So goals in order to, for a performance review in October.
So I, I can, I can tell you what I think is.
Performance review's not in October, it's go, it, the goals will be set by.
Yeah, the goal setting.
No later than.
We put it in a contract, no later than October.
Gotcha, okay, so it does make sense.
And it might make sense to do it before the school year starts.
Yeah, one of the sug- suggestions I made is that we, the evaluation happens in the summer. Let's not try to cram this in the end of a school year because we've got so much going on. So I always say that, that, you know, again, there's cycles to things and if we can set the goals, really
Right.
Um do the evaluation and set the new goals for the, for the summer, if you do that over the course of your summer during your retreat, then sets the direction and the tone for me to sit with my administrative team and say, okay, this is gonna be our goals. You know, so this is, there can be some sense of alignment. Once we get um kind of into good and healthy cycles, there, there, you know, I haven't seen a school improvement plan, but if we don't have one, we'll have a district improvement plan, so we have to call them strategic plans. And that's gonna kind of derive a lot of our work. So this year, I think we, we're, we're kinda coming to an idea about what perhaps my goals ought to be and I don't think it's gonna be that difficult to put them together, I think it's pretty apparent, at least to me, what those might look like and I think perhaps you do too, so. You know, we est- established them this year, we know we have a, um, our, our site set on doing a visioning process next year. And so we have to prepare ourselves to be able to do that, so.
Makes sense.
They, they lack sense for all.
We can talk about that in our strategy session, but one of the things Mike has, uh tried to do, um and, and I've still got it in my folder and it's putting milestones down for the year. On the list. I still have it in the front of my, uh loose leaf notebook that talks about I'm gonna do this by this and this by this.
That's what I meant by benchmarking, you have to, you know, you have to.
Yeah, I think, I think identifying, you know, um high-level actions, you know, steps. And we, we, the, the plan is at our second retreat, I think it's on a Monday, Tuesday, the Tuesday, the sixth, that that's on the agenda. So, um, so when, when, when we, you know, we've set aside several hours so that we can set the goals and then we can come up with a common understanding of what those, you know, high-level o- objectives will be. And then, you know, come to kind of a consensus around when we think, um, those things will be achieved, so.
We don't wanna stop you.
One more, while we're on the topic, I have one more point, and just, this is planning a seat, not so much for discussion, but I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander. The board's self-evaluation should happen intermittently. We shouldn't wait until the end of the year as well, right?
No.
And the board should be doing it on goal setting as well too.
Right.
And these, there's gonna be alignment, obviously, but they're gonna be different too.
So back in the day, at the beginning, that was that two-day retreats. It was actually one time, it was four, four days, we would come in the evening and we did that, we did self-evaluation.
Yep.
Uh Jim's evaluation, goal setting, but that worked and it, you know, it was casual, it was down there on the picnic table.
That's right.
You know, and it was just, that's why.
Pizza or, you know, coffee and donuts or whatever.
And there was no bloodshed, it was nice.
Alright, so did we pretty good on that? Alright, um, let's see, uh, de-conduct hearings in service in a jugular body. Let me ask the, the, this more seasoned board members, have you had any student hearings or, alright, I'm gonna gloss over that.
I just had one staff.
Yeah, with the non-renewal dismissal or grievance or something?
No, it was a time off thing.
Oh.
Under the CVA, yeah, alrighty. Um I'm, I, I won't spend too much time on that, um, you know, the reality is if you get to that point, you're gonna have local council involved anyway.
And I think we did that time.
Barbara, I know, I didn't say Barbara's coming in at seven o'clock or whatever, so. Um the one thing, just to be mindful of, you know, you, you have to be, um because the board is sitting as judge and jury, be mindful of, of what you hear, if you get to this point. And what you hear out in the community or what you see on social media and really try and come into that community as, as clean as possible. As unbiased as possible.
Or you excuse yourself.
Or re- or you recuse yourself, that's, that's exactly right. Um you know, I've seen situations where, you know, there've been, you know, a student, let's say, just gonna give a hypothetical, sell drugs in the, in the bathroom or whatever, aside from the criminal aspect, you know, the, the board members are on social media. Board members are calling up parents that they, you know, what did you hear, what does your son say, what I heard, and you, 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 you can't do that. You know, you may hear some of the stuff, again, it's a small community, you're gonna be at the ball game or the soccer game and somebody's gonna come up to you and you can hear what Johnny Jones did, you know. But just be mindful that, you know, if you get to this hearing, you have to kind of, you have to sort of shut down the, you know, where you're getting your information from. Don't go out doing your own investigation, the, the information that you need to conduct the hearing will be presented to you at that time.
By the person that you hired.
By the person that you did that, right, either the superintendent or the principal or this, or your, your district attorney. Um jumping on collective bargaining, um this is on page five of mine, how many?
Two.
The paras or, or you do that, you do any bargaining here?
They were starting with them, cause they just started. Just the one. The, the teachers were last year.
Um just as an aside, um our staff attorney, Will Phillips, Will has a lot of experience in collective bargaining. Um he, he did, he's, before he came to NHSBA, he was a private practice. Um he did, he, he did a lot of bargaining, he knows collective bargaining agreements really well. Um and do you use counsel, do you use like a law or something?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't, you know, we try and always work in concert with private attorneys, but if you've got a general question that you don't wanna get, you know.
Spend a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars for a six-minute phone call, um you know, feel free to, to, to give Will a call, that, that's what we're here for.
Barrett, just as an aside, not to interrupt, I am grateful for the times that we've been able to call you and Will for small questions um and take advantage of our membership in that way, so thank you for being.
That's what we want you to do, we're, we're here to help.
To help us.
You know, we're, we're, we're the starting point, especially Susan, for you as a new superintendent. Um you know, rely on us for the, some of the things that you don't know. rely on us for the, some of the things that you don't know, whether it's New Yorkshire law, whether it's culture, whether or not, whatever it is, if you've just got a question about the right to know law, or a question about this statute, um, you know, again, we we work in concert, I know Barbara really well, and work in concert, um, but that's what we're there for, to fill in those gaps and you, you know, to to take advantage of of the membership.
Bear, that's a, that's an excellent quick reference, the book you have there. Do superintendents typically have one?
Yeah, I believe, um, you may not be able to get this copy, um, but the Department of Education, I believe, orders enough copies for every superintendent in the state. Um, if you, they usually are made available, um, October, November-ish, cause the legislative session just ended.
Yep.
So they've gotta go through and revise them, Westlaw has to print them up, and we usually, um, we usually get a call or an email from somebody at their department, you know, somewhere between like Halloween and Thanksgiving, since the books are already young and you want to come pick them up, so. And I don't know if they mail them to you, or I'm not sure how that works.
There's none on the bookshelves in the office, so.
Yeah.
So that's what it says on the list.
Yeah, I'm sure they.
Penny might know.
Um, alright, collective bargaining. Um, communications with the public, keep the public informed of board actions. Um, you know, we're all familiar with with the right to know law and open meetings, um, and, you know, public records and things of that nature. Other boards, again, through policy, um, you know, have other avenues of communication with the public websites. I don't know if New York has a social media presence, um, you know, we know the principals and teachers are sending out, you know, weekly or monthly newsletters. I don't know if the super, if 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 other superintendents have done that here, if you want.
We started it. We just need to get her settled, I don't want to throw anything else on her.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, um, you know, um, and, you know, to the extent that you have just a a quick welcome that you weren't happy to be here, like, you know, I'm free at any time.
You'll, at the first day of school, you'll, that's, you'll be hitting, you'll get the buses, and you can be there with parent drop-off.
That's exactly, yep.
We get your T-shirt that says, I'm the new superintendent.
I'm like, we do.
So, you know, that 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 communication with the public can 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 take on a lot of forms, and I know you, um, we'll talk a little bit about that later, and a little bit too, c- communications with 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 parents, and. And you get that call from the constituency on how to handle that, I'll get to that, um, in a little bit as well, too. Um, continuing G, strategic planning, long-term goals, um, plans and objectives. Um, interestingly, um, there's a Department of Education rule, three oh three point zero one G. Um, imposes upon school boards the duty to quote, develop long-range plans and identify measurable and attainable short-term objectives. Um, from my experience, you know, a lot of boards are, uh, fall short on this. Um, some boards have strategic plans, other boards don't. Some boards did strategic planning, but then it, went and ended up on a shelf collecting dust.
Exactly.
Other boards have very active, um, strategic plans where it is part of every meeting. There's an agenda item relative to the strategic plan at every meeting, so they're, again, checking in on those benchmarks, checking in on the resources that are needed. Checking in with, you know, whoever is assigned a task under the strategic plan, the superintendent, or the board, facilities director, or brick-in coordinator. Um, so to the extent that you have, um, a strategic plan, um, you know, I recommend that you you pull it out and you make it an active, living, breathing document, and you maintain some fidelity towards it, and at every meeting, have an agenda item, in every meeting relative to a particular, particular subject or area or topic on the strategic plan. Um, alright, the 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 middle stuff, um, Jennifer, um, this is gonna be for you. Learning curve for new school board members, um, the more seasoned board members don't necessarily need to, need to to go through that. Um, and in the interest of time, I I do wanna jump to the the superintendent's duties as well, too. And we're gonna compare and contrast some of these, um, with the school board duties. So, um, my copy, again, I know we're page off, my copy is page seven, the superintendent's role.
Ours is eight.
Yours is page eight, okay.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna read through some of those, and I'm gonna have us jump back to pages two and three a little bit as well, too. So maybe if you wanna keep a thumb over there. We talked about at the beginning, the onset, how s- how the board's primary function is policymaking, I mean, you're a policymaking body. Shifting gears, but we're gonna see the interrelation between this as as well, too. Um, under the 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 superintendent's role, A, implement policy, and this is Department of Education rule three zero two, the duties of of superintendents. And you'll see where I'm going with this, but then we're gonna take it a step deeper as well, too. Three oh two point oh two A, nominate all certified staff and appoint other employees in accordance with state law, the rules of the state board, and school board policy, right, so directive to the superintendent to carry out school board policy. B, direct and supervise all the work of the employees in the district or districts within the SAU. They shall have powers necessary to make direct, uh, to take such direction effective as outlined in the statute. Um, jump down to D, um, responsible for developing and recommending the school board, uh, within the SAU, the annual budget for the support of the educational program, so on and so forth, underline in accordance with school board policy. E, responsible for developing and maintaining accounting system in accordance with local school board policy. So, I mean, the basic, the simplest way to say this is, the school board sets policy. The superintendent implements policy, and then delegates to staff other responsibilities to that. The BA, the special ed director, facilities director, principals, so on and so forth. Um, but I also wanna highlight a relationship between these particular roles. Jump back to page, um, wherever it is on yours, two or three, when we're talking about the 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 school board policies.
Two.
Okay. Remember the first one, we we said, um, A, this is three oh three point oh one A, and then keep a thumb on back on page eight as well, too. The school board shall adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate the recruitment, employment, evaluation, dismissal of teachers and other employ- employment-related policies. Jump back to page eight and read, three oh two point oh two A and B. Superintendent shall nominate all certified staff and appoint other employees in accordance with school board policy. You get how there's the relation, it's telling you the board adopt employment-related policies. Superintendent oversee employees in correlation with school board policy. And B, um, the superintendent shall direct and supervise the work of all employees. Do you see how there's a, they're related? Back to page two, three oh three point oh one B, the school board shall adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate the purchase of equipment, supplies, and services. We talked about how that's budget-related. If you jump back to page eight, three oh two point oh two D, superintendent's responsible for developing and recommending the school boards within the SAU, the annual budget. There's a correlation there, and it's not by accident. School board adopt employment-related policies. Superintendent implement those policies. School board develop a budget, superintendent help the board develop the budget. That's where the co-relationship comes in, and where the the relationship between responsibilities and authority of the superintendent in accordance with school board policy come to play. And, you know, there's no bright line where that is, I mean, it's cause, you know, different boards are gonna have different personalities, different superintendents are gonna have different ways they wanna work within their boards. So there's, you know, an interrelation there, but that's where the relation is. The board adopts the policy, superintendent implements the policy. And as we talked about a few minutes ago, your oversight to ensure that the policies are being implemented the way you want them to be im- implemented is your evaluation, is Susan's evaluation, that's your oversight, which is why it doesn't make sense just to do one evaluation in May or June or July, where you're, you're checking in from time to time. You know, where are we on this, where are we on that? We've got those list of five or six action items or goals that we want this year, you know, check in and make sure that they're moving along, so there aren't any surprises come May or June or July.
Bear, it's helpful for me to lay it all back to the policy.
Yes.
You know, I, that happens in my mind, but to have you articulate it again and again, it really does drive the point home how important that foundational piece of our work really is to everything else that happens.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I also like the idea of the check-ins, because I also would think it would keep us, things from simmering. If we're, we are right on it, and we're talking about it, taking care of it, there's no simmering, and we're communicating as a board to the superintendent communicating as a board, and I like that idea.
Alright, so we're clear on that? Alright, moving on to the next page, we talked about, um, this is under, again, duties of the superintendent. Um, nominate professional staff, I think we covered that, are we clear on that? Alright. Um, the next one is an important, i- i- is an important statute. This is provide superintendent services, and that phrase actually appears in law.
Page nine.
Page nine.
Um, superintendent, there's, there's a statute, RSA one ninety-four C four, and in my version, it's italicized, um.
It is here, too.
And and if you, if you look at the paragraph two, each superintendent, each, excuse me, each SAU or single school district shall provide the following superintendent services. The paragraph two, governance, organizational structure, implementation of administrative services, including but not limited to. And then, there's a a a list, A through R, goes on to the next page, of all the things that are within the purview of the superintendent. And if you look through these, these are jo- the, these are the day-to-day tasks, if you will. Um, payroll, cash flow, bills, recruitment su- supervision and evaluation of staff, development, review, and evaluation of curriculum, compliance with, um, you know, federal law Americans with Disabilities Act, pupil achievement, you know, oversight of insurance, school board operations, so on and so forth. Um, I mean, these are the things that fall in the superintendent's lap every single day. And I would imagine that most of these things are going to land on a Susan's desk, if not every single day, you know. She's gonna touch on every one of these things in any given week. Um, and again, the board's responsibility with respect to these things, I mean, I haven't seen your policy manual, I'm willing to bet you have policies that touch on probably every, every single one of these. And if you don't, you wanna develop a policy, you can. And if you don't, and things are operating fine, maybe you don't need to.
If you suggested that we do, we do.
So, I mean, um, but, you know, I, I mean, you know, some of these are overly specific, where you're not necessarily gonna have a policy on, um, you know, identification of consultants to be used for their service. If you may have a policy, since that the board may authorize a superintendent, the board's made from time to time, all your consultants, but, um, you get what I'm saying.
Right.
You're gonna have policies or internal controls, anyway, about payroll, cash flow, you're gonna have policies on evaluation of staff. You're gonna have policies on review, review and evaluation of curriculum. You're gonna have policies relative to, you know, federal law and disability law, things of that nature. You're gonna have policies on, um, uh, under E, you're gonna have policies on assessment, student assessment. Um, you're gonna have policies on program facilities.
Yeah.
Um, you, we know that, you you have policies, cause NHSA pushed these out in conjunction with the DOE about, um, meeting federal, state, and local compliance requirements, all of those federal policies that we put out, um, last year. Um, school board operations, I mean, you probably have policies on that. Um.
Was it true that you have three thousand policies here?
We have a lot.
We have a lot, and we went through them all this year.
We have a lot.
It was a Herculean effort this year.
It's a lot of policies.
A lot of, what, the, the, but there was, these guys spent.
I don't know how anyone can administer that.
That's exactly right. How, what was, what was typical in Massachusetts, Susan, I mean?
Nothing there, yeah. Because we don't write policies when there's law.
Yeah, it is kinda redundant.
Yeah.
So then you know.
The law's a lot more prescriptive in Massachusetts than, yeah, though.
Well, I mean, in some cases, in other cases, not so much, but.
What I think part of the reason that some, a lot of school boards have, I'll be, I'll say, too many policies. Um, you know, I don't know if if the Mass Association of School Communities does this, but NHSA is the primary policy source in New Hampshire. Um, so we have a sample policy database or manual, whatever you wanna call it, probably four hundred sample policies in there. There are probably about seventy or so that are required by law. We have probably maybe a hundred and fifty that are, we we categorize as recommended. And then we have probably two hundred that are optional. When board policy management development first became, um, w- w- when more and more policies were becoming required to school boards, NHSA developed this policy manual. We gave it to our members, this is even before my time. I think a lot of districts basically took the NHSA policy manual and just adopted it verbatim. They, they struck out NHSA, and put New York's school board up top. So from the get-go, they had too many policies, when the design of it was not to, our policy services was not to tell boards that they have to adopt three or four hundred policies. That's why half of them are total or optional. We keep them on file, so if we get a phone call that says, do you have a policy about acts, we have one on file. Didn't mean that we were intending boards to necessarily adopt all four hundred policies.
And some of ours are very specific to a specific, I mean, we've, we've eliminated some of those where appropriate, but where there were, you know, s- one specific school board member erred in a certain way, and so a policy was developed to deal with that one specific person at that one specific point in time. Obviously, it's not the name.
One student did one thing.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And then, we get rid of a lot of redundant ones.
We did, but it's like, you know, yeah, we did.
I'm a little bit confused by this, because when, when we did the policy review, Kim and Ingrid went through hundreds, right?
Yeah.
And they were brought before the board for approval, and the comment was made, you don't need to comment on ninety percent of these because they're state mandated. So don't even look at it. You you get, is that right, Kim, or am I overstating?
I don't know, you might be overstating it a little bit.
Okay, but.
But a lot of them were based on RSA.
Right, so we didn't have any choice as to whether seventy-five percent.
It was a lot of them.
Of of that huge amount, that was my impression, I may be wrong.
No, I think you're right. It was up there, it was like seventy, seventy, sixty to seventy percent.
So, so it was brought to the board, let's not have a discussion about thirty-two A, because state mandates it anyways.
Yeah.
So we talked about how do we wanna tweak the other twenty-five percent, or whatever the hell the number is.
Right.
And do you wanna use the the word school board, or do you wanna use the word the community?
District.
District, so, my takeaway, and I could be wrong, was that the reason there were so many, is we have to have them.
Yes and no. There are, there are about seventy, seventy-five policies that are required by both state and federal law.
In the school, in the, in the, in the, the Department of Education.
Yeah, 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 but why, when I say, yeah, when I say state law, that's either DOE stat- state statute or federal law.
Gotcha.
What, and i- if you pull, and I'm sure you, I'm sure everybody's seen, when you see the NHSA sample policies, we have the legal reference. It'll say, you know, RSA, whatever. Just because we have the legal reference, doesn't necessarily mean that a pol- that statute requires a policy. We're saying the genesis for this policy or the subject matter of policy is found under this statute. Um, I'm trying to think of an, for, you know, for example, the bullying law is very prescriptive. That statute says what has to be in your policy. However, if you look at the Department of Education rule, and this is a mandated policy, so I'm I'm gonna use this as an example. The Department of Education rule says, the school board shall have a policy on the number of credits necessary to graduate from your high school. Doesn't tell you how many that is, doesn't tell you how they have to earn them. That's where your sort of semblance of local control comes on in.
You want it to be appropriate to have a policy, then.
Yeah, correct, exactly.
Need that in order to en- enforce and, uh, policies that are needed, and all that requirement of.
And, you know, another example, so RSA one eighty-nine colon six, I believe, says that the school board shall.
Oh my god, I can't even remember.
I can't remember ninety-one A.
Yeah, if only I could like, use that like Jefferies.
Maybe someday.
But, so for example, that's the statute that requires transportation. You have to transport all kids, K through eight that live, what is it, a mile and a half or two miles from school, whatever the statute says. That doesn't, so that's the requirement. That law doesn't tell you how you have to provide your transportation. It doesn't tell you how many buses you're going to have. Doesn't tell you what the routes are, what time pickup is going to be. So, but that's an example of statute that imposes a requirement. This is a legal requirement on the district. So then you're gonna have a policy that, you know, this is how we're gonna do transportation here. The legal reference is there, just so somebody can relate back to it.
Sure.
That we, we misunderstood the number of policies.
I don't think so, I don't think so.
Because we've got to skid it.
We've, we had, let me tell, when I first started on this board, everything was policy-driven.
No, I'm sorry, I mean state mandated, mandated ones, is it?
We have, we have a list.
That we have too many state mandated ones?
Well, they are with you.
Her, her point is you got a lot.
We do have a lot.
When we reviewed the policy as a board, that we continually come in and say, you have no input to this because, and there were a ton of.
Yes.
Is it possible that we got too many?
No, Al, I think you might be getting a little bit confused when we were saying, as opposed to state mandated policy, maybe, you know, school board association suggested policy, which, that might have been.
Yeah, okay, but so we.
And we looked, we looked at those to see, and there were some that were recommended for deletion, that we either decided to delete because they were not consistent, or.
Okay.
Yes, yes, so that's what I think, there might be more of the, yes.
We have, we have a master list of all the policies that are required by law, so if somebody wants to email Will or Amanda, um, you know, next week, I'll, we can, we can get you those of, of the mandated policies.
I think we have, I think you've.
I think we have it.
Yeah, we probably, you probably.
Yeah, I think that was the basis for the whole thing.
Yeah, I think that we have those, so that would have been back in January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we did it.
Don't start that again. The, the policies don't make us go through it again.
No, and I think, I think, going back to this.
Oh, let's just eliminate every fifth one. Right?
No, I will not sign off for that, no. Um, one of the things that I think is important, getting back to the superintendent services piece of this training, is that, you know, there's so mu- that's where in my mind, the educational leadership comes from, and the day-to-day operations of which I do not have a part.
And do not want.
I didn't say that, but yes, you know, and I, I think that that's important for us to remember, that, that, that entity and that process of making, implementing the policies and making the budget work. Is Susan's, with communication with us on how it's going.
I, I had a board member tell me one time, seasoned board member, you know, you. Been on the board a while, and he said, he said, you know, the way I look at it, if I get a question or an inquiry or a comment from a constituent, unless it relates to policy or budget, it's probably not within my purview.
That's a really good, I like that.
I think that's a, that may be a little oversimplified.
No, I think it's perfect.
If it relates to budget or policy, it's within the board's purview, if it relates to a particular student or a particular staff member, it's probably an administrative function. So, so that's just.
And the chain of command, that's, the chain of command.
Yeah.
And that's where the reciprocation of the relationship has to exist, to say, Susan, this is, I spoke with John Smith, this is what we talked about. I have referred him to the principal or whatever the appropriate thing is, but I wanna make you aware that this conversation is going on.
And again, the chain of communication, you have a policy on that, two policy KE and KEB are gonna talk about when you get those inquiries or the email or the phone call or whatnot from a constituent who's got, I don't wanna say a problem, just an issue. Maybe they have a question about something, you know, you know, it's a balance, you wanna be responsible with your constituents, you know, if they say, you know, can you get me a copy of the budget? Yeah, I can do that, sure, absolutely, it's a public record, I'll, you know, call Susan and say, can you email it to Mr. Smith or whatever the case may be. Um, but, you know, the, 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 the example I always give, let, let's take it back to the dress code. You know, let's say, let's say your neighbor calls you, they know you're on the school board, and they say, you know, my kid got, you know, detention for violating the dress code, I don't think that's right, what are you gonna do about it? Well, I can't do anything about it, that's an administrative function.
Give him a towel.
Versus if they say, if they say, you know, my kid got detention, I looked at the policy, I really think that policy could be changed. One of those is within your purview, one of those is not within your purview. And again, it's an oversimplified example, but I, I, I think it's helpful to conceptualize, if the constituent's calling you, asking you to review a policy, make a change, I don't agree with the policy, we'll take, we're happy to take it up, we'll put it, we'll put it on the agenda. Um, you know, I got five calls from five constituents asking us to look at the dress code policy, the board's happy to revisit that.
And I also say public comment.
Yeah, exactly.
That's my other big thing, that's, that's your time as community member.
That's right.
And ours is.
Public comment, and, you know, and, you know, nothing, we, we have more ways of communicating these days than we ever have in history. Email, text, phone calls, whatever the case may be, if, you know, if you have a, if, you know, just a good practice, you go to the person, maybe you've got the issue. But, you know, another aspect to that too, um, you know, if you get the call from the constituent about the second grade teacher. Let's use this as an example, a second grade teacher. You know, you pass it on to, to Susan, who then has the principal look into it. You're gonna find out if the problem hasn't been rectified, because, right, if nobody called that parent back yet, they're gonna call you and say, you told me that Susan was gonna give me a call, or the principal was gonna give me a call, it's been two weeks, nothing's gonna hap- nothing's happened. So then you get on the horn, you say, Susan, Mrs. Smith is, you know, breathing down my neck because nobody ever got back to her. Likewise, if Susan does talk to the principal, and talks, the principal talks to his or her staff. Um, if the issue's not rectified, you're gonna hear about that again too. You know, say, Jesus, Susan, I got calls from six parents in the last three days about the second grade teacher. You may not get involved, but there's something there, obviously, if you're getting that, you know, that, that, that many calls about the same particular issue. But again, just conceptual, budget and policy is the two big things that the board deals with. If it relates to that, communicate with your constituents as need be. If it relates something other than that, chances are it's gonna be administrative function that you should refer back.
So let me go back, so Mrs. Smith called me, second grade teacher, stinks, all the parents are upset, but Mrs. Smith's the only one calling me, but everybody's upset. My role is to call Susan and say, heads up, this is what's happening. Now, the constituent calls me back, nothing happened, then you, my words, what I would say is, make a meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, nothing else.
Call Susan, call Susan and sit, or the principal or sit down.
Right, but if you have a policy that says that there's a certain, um, um, chain, right?
Communication.
Of, uh, grievance to follow, then, then what you would say perhaps is, you know, thank you for sharing that with me. Um, have you had a conversation with the teacher, let's say first, cause, let's say that's the first level. Okay, if you haven't met with the teacher, what I would recommend is that you go and have a meeting with the teacher.
And your policy spells this out?
Yes, I had a, I, if I had a meeting with the teacher, um, uh, then the next person that you would have a conversation with is, right, exactly. If, you know, and then make sure that they, they go through that, that piece, because otherwise, what you don't wanna have happen is that everybody come up to me, I will just have open office hours. Um, and then all I'm gonna be able to do then is just to send them back to the teacher, so I think, I think it's, it's all of us understanding what those protocols are, so that we can best help the parent get their needs met, because at the lowest level possible, because, um.
Do you want a heads up? If I'm getting these, Mrs. Smith, say six of the students' parents are called, do you want heads up, something's brewing in Mrs. Kelly's class? Like, do you want something like that, or you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna like chain of command, you need this teacher, principal, and then supervisor.
Well, I, I, I think it's really hard to globalize, you know.
So is it gonna be fact-specific?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, the second grade teacher is, you know, there's evidence to support that, you know, something unsafe is happening in the classroom, is one kind of a complaint, right?
Okay.
Another kind is that I don't like my te- my, my, my child's grade, well, that, that would be a, a very different scenario, so I don't think that you can just categorically say this is right. This is what you would do, I think you'd have to use, you know, your best judgment. Certainly, if at any time, anyone ever feels unsafe, I would like to have a heads up, because that would be something, but if it's a matter of a, you know, um, they don't agree with the grade this, the student received, then I would send them back to the teacher, you know, there's.
That would be, I would, and that, that would be an easy one to say, that has nothing to do with policy, or the hiring of the superintendent.
Right, but nonetheless, so there's, there's this dual role you play, play, right, you're, you are a resident here.
And you wanna be responsive to your constituents, you have to listen to them.
And you are the school, right. Right, and then you're giving them your best advice, because you know, as a board member, you know, what the next action, action should be for them. Sometimes people are gonna call you, just because they don't know what to do, you know, and they don't know how to navigate, and they're just seeking your advice.
That's, that's why policy's so important too, and just another example of my policy, to help them navigate, uh, the, the constituent or the parent or whoever meander the process, cause it, it, I mean, it's not clear to, to, to people.
Yeah, so if, i- if it's that, then it's an interaction that should be directed back to, so you're just being helpful, and that's really, um, what, what your, part of your role is, is, is to be helpful, that's a good answer.
Yep.
It's, my question, it's been on my mind, I've been looking for a spot to ask it. So it's kinda related, but not very related, you're gonna go, what's he talking about? Um, and it relates to chain of command.
Yeah.
Um, we on several occasions, um, have a school employee come before the board and complain about some, we have a union president come before the board to, directly to the board and without going through the chain of command, and.
Is this a public comment, or?
And they're also a resident.
And she's a resident.
They can't, you can't, I mean, you really can't.
Well, and, I, I, and I understand that, but if a non-union employee were to walk in here and say, I don't like Susan. Um, w- we would say to them, we would coach them, go through, go through the chain of command, and I, my own feeling is that we should be coaching those individuals to go through the chain of command, and I don't think we do it. I think it's almost an open invitation, where in the private sector.
Let me, let me ask you this too, Al, are they complaining about, are they complaining about other employees, or are they just complaining about district operations?
They're complaining about all kinds of things, they, they, the most recent one was the union president brought the paraleg professionals that had just joined, the, just joined the union to the board to, and I can't remember specifically where the comments were, they weren't.
Because they had been presented to us before that, like, we, remember, we had any.
We didn't need, yeah, yeah, but, but, but a- again, I, I'm trying to understand, should the, should the board be saying to these people, you really need?
What, yeah, what I think you might wanna do, especially with the new superintendent and Mike, our new chair, yeah. I mean, maybe Susan and Mike, you know, write a joint letter or email to the union president and say, can we just sit down and have a cup of coffee and come up with some norms for how the issue's gonna be brought to the board?
Yeah.
You know?
It's just, it's real hard for me.
You know, I, I agree, and, you know, I.
And if it was a janitor, the next morning his boss would be saying, Joe, what the hell are you doing, you don't understand?
That's.
Chain of command, why didn't you come to me?
No, I mean, and, and this is just a thought, I mean, I don't, I don't know the history of union of, of labor relations.
Pretty good.
So, well, good, then, then let's keep them, then let's keep them going, good, and so rather than, you know, and, you know, I'm just thinking maybe, this, I get, this is, I'm just spitballing here, maybe, you know, you and Mike just have the union president for a cup of coffee and say, you know, we really prefer that this not be brought up in public session, if there are public comments, if there are, I mean, they can do it, they absolutely have the right to do it.
Oh, she'll do it.
But I'm just saying that, you know, is there a more constructive way that we can have this conversation?
I, I'm copying the Joanna, I can't, I'm too good.
I, I, I was gonna say, I'm pretty.
I'm having coffee with her next week.
Perfect, perfect.
Sorry, I'm on the schedule.
Yeah, no, it's just.
We've, we've, we've talked for you, there was a, an established relationship, so, you, you kind of.
But, yeah, I mean, if, if.
I feel, I feel.
Yeah.
I've been very confident that Joanna.
But depending on, you know, if, if it's during public comments, and everybody in the crowd is allowed three minutes, based on whatever your policy says, there's, you can't stop them from doing that, you can ask them, let's see if, you know, there might be a more effective beneficial way to do it.
Thanks, I don't wanna spend any more time.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think that was a great question, you know, and how do you?
I felt, I felt uncomfortable, if she was not, if she, if Joe, the custodian was a resident, my boss at school, they, I guess would have allowed it.
Yeah.
I guess you'd have to.
Yeah, but then, you know.
I don't know, anyway, I don't wanna spend.
For the policy, we would have to.
Yeah.
If, if they're a resident, yeah, there really isn't, obviously, and, and you're gonna have that from time to time, and that's just part of the trouble with life.
Eighty percent of your employees.
I've been doing this thirty years and it's just, and, and it's just, it's, it's, it's their right.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think it's, it does come down to how do we respond to that, and that's one of the goals that we had um, for this meeting and for Saturday, is like, how do we respond to those situations, what do we all feel comfortable with? Let's, let's, let's add, you know, establish some protocols, so that, so that we're all on the same page, you know? That we can say what we need to say in a kind way, that people in our community feel heard. Um, but at the same time, you know, we're honoring, you know, process, you know, and I, I think that that's brilliant.
It really is.
Yeah, well, I don't know, yeah.
And, and if you have process and protocols established, either through policy, if you have practice, that one, it takes heat off the board, you're not saying, you know, this is what the board chair wants this time, with an new board chair might do something different, you gotta, this is how the board has decided to operate with respect to this particular issue, so.
And, and that's some of the work we'll do on Saturday.
Agreed. Um, one last thing on the roles and, um, the, 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 the roles and responsibilities of the school board and the superintendents. Your, your, um, your handout has a chart sort of type that they.
Yes, and page eleven.
Yeah, um, the new version has one a little bit easier to read, this is the one that's online on our website from May of two thousand nineteen, I annexed it, put that in quotation marks, from I think the Idaho School Board Association. We all share all our stuff, and just, you know, talks about, you know, if you wanna take a quick look in this pass, our roles and responsibilities, and then it talks about who's responsible for it. A quick easy chart, so just, you know, keep that with you as, as well too. The one in your handout touches on it somewhat, I think that one's a little bit better visually, so. Um, I know we're, um, running short on time, we did roles and responsibilities, um, board response to inquiries from the public, did we cover that, Al's question?
Yeah.
Alrighty, um, a couple of other things, um, I mean, we can jump into the right to know law, or we can continue sort of on the best practices, roles and responsibilities.
Let's do best practices.
Best practices, alrighty. Um, one of the points that, um, well, thi- this is gonna be more conversation than it is anything else. The, the, the remaining ask, the remaining documents in your handout, the roles and responsibilities, are just some of the NHSBA sample policies and some of the things that we've talked about. Uh, again, I know it sounds like you did recently the policy review, so, if they are similar, there may be, um, there may be some changes. Um, uh, talking with Susan, um, personnel management, do you, do, did you have anything specific on that that you wanted to talk about? Or questions relative to that, or we also had some communication strategy, board, superintendent, superintendent to the board, how do you wanna, wanna talk about that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, sure, um, can you, can you flush that out for me a little bit, like, what, what, what specific questions do you have? About protocols, is it about practices in New Hampshire, is it about, what sort of are your line?
I'm, I'm thinking best, best practices, um, and some of it, you know, Jen is new to board life, and, um, I'm new to New Hampshire, and
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
These folks have been around a little bit, and it's, it's kind of like, you know, framing, you know, how, how, what, what are the norms for the, an example of that would be,
Sure. Yeah, sure.
Um, uh, you know, the, the board acts, um, as a whole, like individually, um, there is no, no power.
Right.
Yeah.
You know?
Can only act as an entity.
It, yeah, things like that, and so therefore, how do you communicate effectively with that concept in mind?
Sure, um, you know, yeah, a couple points on that, and I hope I'm sort of going down the right road, if not, let me know, and we'll, we'll pivot. Um, you know, be mindful that, as an individual, you don't have any authority to direct the superintendent to do anything. Um, you know, it, ideally, it should come from, you know, the board as a whole, for example, you don't have the authority to call the superintendent and say, um, you know, I'm not having the spreadsheet to be put together, I want you to tell him to do it in a, or in a different, in a different manner. An individual doesn't have that right to do that. If you're looking at what's been presented, and the board collectively agrees that, you know, you want something redone, or you've done it in a particular manner, then the board can do that, and, and be mindful, don't get caught up in emotions, sometimes a lot of things can be done by general consent. You know, like, if you're looking around and everybody's nodding, and everybody's in agreement, you just verify, say, do we have general consent on that? And everybody says yes, then you, you don't need to go through the group of, or the, or the chain, and all that sort of stuff. Um, I imagine though that, you know, because you're on the board, from time to time, you know, you would reach out or email privacy for attendants about, about one thing or another, is that sort of where you're going, is it individual one-on-one communication, or is it how to manage?
No, so, so if they, things will happen, we can even go about, there are members of the community and there are members of the board, they're gonna hear certain things.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things I've seen, so, one of the things I've seen happen, and I'm not saying it's happening here, cause I don't know.
It probably isn't, but.
Not, not.
If it's good, it's probably.
Yeah, yeah. It's original thought, it's definitely not on here.
Um, and that's that, um. I, I could conceive of a situ- situation where I cannot lead this organization. Because I'm running errands, and I've, and I'm not saying that's happening here, but I've seen that happen with superintendents. Where, because we're not working well as, as a unit, supporting one another in the work. That what happens is that somebody gets upset, cause it's gonna happen all the time, and then they're gonna come to you and they're gonna be upset. And we've just set these goals, we have these, um, expectations, you have expectations of me. But now, um, we're not gonna work on that, what we're gonna work on is something, something else, and something else, and something else, and something else. And, and it's not, I've, I've just seen that happen, it's, it's just not, it's not productive.
Superintendent does not respond to the board, they respond to five individual board members.
Yes, and, and the board members are responding to ten thousand community members. And, and, and it's impossible to move the district forward, and I'm not saying, so, so I guess I'm looking at. You know, healthy boundaries and how do we work, um, in this construct that we're living in, in a way that feels comfortable? Because I know that, um, I, I mean, I live in the community that I'm in, and I'm an administrator too, and, you know, then I have my son, and there's a whole. Different levels, right, sometimes I'm being a mom, and, you know, sometimes I'm, I'm just being a resident and grocery shopping. Sometimes I'm doing my job, so.
I need to buy milk too, man.
Right, you know, and, and so the way I respond to things are, 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 are different depending on what hat I'm wearing.
Sure.
Um, but we all have to feel comfortable, you know, knowing how, you know, what those boundaries are, and then how we navigate those. And then, um, how we, you know, can work productively to provide the best educational experiences for kids. A healthy environment for staff to work in, you know, a positive climate and culture in the community, you know, so, and, and that's challenging.
Well, I mean, I think it starts with the goal setting, and, and you know, whether or not, do you have a strategic plan?
No.
I mean, you, you might wanna consider that, it's, you know.
It's happening.
That's in our, in our.
It's, it's on the radar, gosh, um, if you need assistance with that, let us know, to, you know, in the service that we provide. Um, but, you know, I, I think, and even in the absence of a strategic plan, I think you can still do some goal setting that helps. I mean, if, you know, my, ideally, if a board is, I, I think I talked about this, if you have. A strategic plan or at least goals for this school year, let that drive your school board agendas. Let your goals drive, obviously, they're gonna be ministerial.
That's the whole.
They're, they're gonna be ministerial things that you, you gotta review the, the manifest, and you gotta, you know, authorize this check or this payment or whatnot. You're never gonna get rid of that ministerial stuff, but if you're, if you establish the goals and some, some. For lack, I'm just gonna use the phrase strategic planning right now, and I don't necessarily need the, you know, the, the, what do you?
The booklet.
The booklet, right, exactly, um, that should drive your agenda, that should drive your conversations. On how we have, uh, how, what is the board's role in achieving, helping the district achieve these goals? Whether or not that budget related, whether or not that's student achievement related, and obviously, it could be multiple things. Um, you know, another question to, to always ask yourself, and it's hard, because, you know, so much of what boards do. Doesn't have the direct tie-in, but you ask yourself, how, how does what I'm doing or talking about, or action the board has taken. Improve or enhance student achievement?
Impact the kids, that's our new.
And I'm, I'm not an educator, I mean, I, you know, I, I've worked in this field for fifteen years, and I, I come from, uh. My parents were teachers, I grew up in College Town, my sister's a teacher, so I know it, but I, I mean, I would be the first person to say, I am not an educator. I know the laws, right, I leave the education of kids up to, up to the administrators. But the board can do things that have direct impacts on student achievement, I mean, we started our conversation of, conversation about class size. Right, and how, you know, and is there a correlation between class size, is there a correlation between, you know, number of kids in the room? So, that's where your control is, and I think that's where your, that's where your communications should be, and, and where your board actions should be.
I, I think it's even, even more broader than that, insofar as the board, um, as, you know, the governing body sets the tone. How we interact with each other, how we adhere to our, our goals, our policies, uh, if we're not doing it, and we're not setting the example.
That's right.
It, it, it creates a culture that, you know, doesn't do it.
So then, can we kinda, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
And just, I'm having that brain fart, but, but where you're just, if we can go over the roles. New chair, new board, new superintendent, like I want.
This is the prime time to like do what you wanna do with the district.
And have our tone set, because I, this is a, this is a great board, I think Jen's a great addition to this. None of us all agree on everything, and I, but we function.
Yeah.
And we've lost that this last year, we've kind of had little fires, how do we pull it back together? Is that going over the, and I hate doing this, trust me, but do we go over the rules, what's the role of the chair, what's the role as a board? Should we do that?
I mean, you know, and, you know, I'm here today talking about this, and, and I mean, just, you know, a, a lot of times. And I don't wanna say a lot, but plenty of times where I've, I've gone out and I've done roles and responsibilities training, and I check in with the superintendent. Two months later, I say, how's it going, and he said, they were great for the first three weeks. And then they went, they went way back, they went back to what they were doing with the board, so. Um, you know, so keep this handy, keep the, the roles and responsibilities packet, you know, in your, in your, in your board handouts, and just have it with you.
And links each other.
What if it's a goal, we check in on it quarterly, right, like?
Right.
And, and I think also, you know, moving into Saturday and beyond, in terms of setting up parameters and boundaries that we all agree to adhere to. And believe that I'm gonna do that every time to the best of my ability, Susan's gonna do that, Mike's gonna do it, and if I go outside of that. What is the corrective action to bring me back to the fold in a right way, so that we can move forward in a positive, continue to move forward in a positive way?
Talked about, um, is one of our goals for, you know, this weekend, is to, okay, what does everybody feel comfortable? We're make, gonna make mistakes, I'm gonna make mistakes, we're gonna make mistakes, you wanna do our level best to, um, adhere to our protocols? And we're gonna slip, and then what we do, how do we handle that? And I think if we talk about those things upfront, nobody has to feel uncomfortable.
Yep.
You know, that, that, that we know, this is, this is how we're going to communicate with one another, this is how we're gonna support our growth as, as a group. Uh, to get, this is how we'll build trust with one another, and, um, and this is also how we enforce. These kind of ground rules that we set for ourselves, and then that's how we can measure them, you know?
Yeah.
Um, how many times did, you know, did we blow it, are we improving?
Kim's done it again.
Part of this, part of this, if we're talking about, you know, at a meeting, part of that falls in responsibility to the board chair, so you need to. I need to, honestly, manage the other four members, but your chair, you're in charge, if you feel somebody's kinda getting astray. Um, you know, you, you gotta reel them back in, and, you know, I'm sure they're trusting me with you down the professional.
And that's through communication, and, and again, so that's what we will establish Saturday, that will be a communication thing, so there's not. A big blow up at a meeting, like it's, there's no public embarrassment.
And I think that goes to Mike's point of behaving in a professional manner, continuing to do that, cause I think that's something that we have really effectively done for these past years. So I think continuing that and being the role model for the, those things, I think.
I think it led the tone of the community, it, it changed, it changed the whole.
Yeah, it did.
It built trust, it, and it's, it's something we get, but, but it's just something we need to.
That, and also going back to what Barrett said about all of us, and it, it's this thing that has guided us all in our different ways. What is best for the kids, and what is gonna give these kids the best outcome they can have, that, whatever that is. I don't know what it is, cause I'm not an educator all the time, that's why we need Susan to help us.
But the board still has a role in that.
Yeah.
In supporting the administration, and, and, and providing, you know, the, I know the budget is always a balance between, you know, yeah, wish every kid could have.
Yeah.
Every AP course known to man, we know that, but there's a, a, you know, there's another side of the coin with that, but you can support a budget, you can. You know, do strategic planning, you can, you know, if, look at the data and the studies about kids and what your class size and all that sort of stuff. You know, you, look at the things that are within your control and the data that's available, and analyze that, and use that to make. To make informed decision based on the recommendations from your administrators on how it's gonna help.
And then it's follow-up, right, so I can, I, I can call Mike, he's gonna call me, hey, I'm setting the agenda, what do you want? We still haven't gone over that policy, class size, what are we doing, and then he can communicate to Susan, this is what I'm doing. And then I can sit back and go, oh, okay, he'll show up in a month, like about this, that communication piece, which I think has been missing from us for a while.
I can share a personal experience, if you don't mind, like I'm gonna share it anyways.
I don't know which one.
I'm afraid.
Does it involve Northwood's law?
Does it what? No, I wish it did, it would be easier, but Mike and I spent a lot of time in the past week. On a subject, um, that, um. You, uh, I think was disturbing us both, and, uh, he sent me a note this morning, he said, you know, he said. Um, that, um, um. You know, we gotta be careful to make sure that we're not spending a lot of time on stuff, uh, that isn't devoted to. Um, something really important, and it wasn't, I mean, the, the discussions we had were, they were fun, they were gossipy, they were. I don't, gossipy, is that what? People and stuff, and it had absolutely nothing to do with the project that we're working on, it was all the scrambling stuff underneath, and, um.
The little fires.
Yeah.
The little fires, Alex, what have you been dealing with, that my goal, for me, is to turn to her and, and say. Go through, yeah, or through, or through my.
Or to turn to ourselves and say, is that really, does that support one of your four goals that we're talking about? The answer is no.
Right.
And, and it, it may be said in there where we have expertise, and people aren't listening to us, or all those kinds of issues, but it has absolutely nothing to do with.
One of the things I.
That was a good learning lesson.
One of the things I've been recommending to boards more frequently, and. This is neither here nor there, but we're looking at collaborating with a company that does some of board management software. Um, is time on task, time yourself on each agenda. How much time did we, did we spend?
Part of your job now.
Did, did we, did we spend an hour talking about the budget or policy or student outcomes? Or did we spend an hour arguing over what color we're gonna paint the walls?
I love that.
We spent the most amount of time determining where the sign was gonna go, in front of the junior senior.
I, I don't mean this to.
What is A, what is B, I don't know.
What does that have to do with promoting student achievement?
That was the longest.
It was safety, though, it was actually.
It was safety, it was safety, but we took it beyond.
A manager consulting once told me, he says, you know, two types of people, this guy that comes in the office, which is me. And goes through his inbox, and he has all the easy crap, right? He handles, responds to Joe, and responds to Sam, and, and we'll set up that meeting later, and, and there is a tendency to self-satisfaction to do the stuff. Quickly, uh, make a difference and go on to the next one, but again, it goes back to those four.
Yeah.
What are we here for, you know?
Yeah, if you have priorities and those goals, you know, and, and what, you know, you have policy, budget, student achievement. The goals that you set for the district to be built, and that should be driving your agenda, and just as a test, you know, if. See, just for the first couple of meetings after the school year starts getting rounded up, try and time yourself and see. Are you spending an hour talking about any stuff that has nothing to do with that, any of those things?
Yeah.
Or are you spending an hour about test scores and student achievement, and are we using the right curriculum, and?
What those test scores mean.
And, and, you know, and what, are, are we aligning our, you know, are, is, are we aligning our professional development, you know, appropriately? And do we need more money for professional development, or do, you know, our math score is too low, and what can the board do within its power to help that? If those are, but do, try the time on task for a few meetings, and just, it'll be an eye opener, it'll be, it'll be an eye opener.
So one of the things that we used to do, I'm, like I am the antique, right, um, chair would. Chair would call vice chair, vice chair would call, next person, next person would call this person, this person would call you. Now, that, I just, that was just, I forget what I called that, but just how we establish what's going on, this is what's gonna happen, do you have any issues? Now, the chair.
Agenda setting, or just pre-meeting prep?
Pre-meeting prep, right, and that, this is what's happening, and any issues, but now, because I'm trying to take some of this off of him.
Yeah.
You know, I feel like there's so much on Mike, can we still do that?
Careful with it.
That's what I, as I'm, as I was saying, I was like, oh, that's why we can't do that anymore, cause now we're, we're normal.
I mean, you know.
Normal board.
It, 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 you know, part of that, I can't answer a yes or no. Because part of it would depend on the nature of the conversation, you know what I'm saying, um.
You're okay, it's not non-public.
Um, you know, I mean, if you're just, if it's, you know, what do you want on the agenda, I think that's fine, if it's.
I, I want this and Mike won't let it on, we, call him and, and like that kind of thing, yeah.
That's, you just be mindful.
And I think that if, if the focus is the goals and objectives, I think Mike and Susan are going to drive the agenda, my, my belief would be that you guys would drive the agenda items to those goals. And unless there's some big huge thing.
Right, so.
I'm gonna trust it.
You know, in terms of agenda setting, um, a couple of different ways, sometimes, um. You know, usually it's the board, it's the chair in conjunction with the superintendent, sometimes there's an email that goes out, what do you guys need? Twice a month, yeah, you know, maybe, you, you know. An email goes out ten days, you know, maybe after the meeting, that, you know, what does anybody want on the agenda? Um, you know, I think, uh, and again, you could maybe put this in policy, if something is maybe, maybe the last item. That you do at your meeting, is to say, what, does anybody want anything on in two weeks?
I like that.
And then, and you gotta be mindful that you're not doing. Um, you can't put everything on that every single person would wanna, cause if Al has five things he wants on the agenda, Mike has five things he wants on the agenda. Agenda, right?
But that would be a board, right, we'd be.
But I would be.
What you can, what you can do is say, you know, you know, okay, I want the playground issue on the agenda. Without taking emotions, show of hands, if three of you agree to put it on the agenda, then it goes on the agenda, something like that.
Or general, I like what you said about general consent, do we have general consensus?
To put this on.
Su- Susan and I will have a re- regular cadence of meeting to go over this, so we can also develop a regular cadence to the board and say, hey, look, you know, get it to me by. Tuesday night or Wednesday night, if you have something, so we.
You, you just have to be mindful that you're not putting, that the board is not spending an exorbitant. And I'm not saying this would happen, but you don't wanna be spending an exorbitant amount of time on a topic that's of, is only of importance to one board member. You know, you have to be, and to agree, there's some self-policing that comes involved with that as well, too, is this my issue or is this a board issue?
Or, and the, the new question is, how's this going, I think, as a board, you can say, I can say to Kim, how's this going to impact the kids? And it.
Or how does it relate to the goals?
Yeah.
To the budget, to the policy, bring it back to those.
And that's where the boundaries are, and what happens when I go outside.
Frankly, I like the system you've got in place right now, which Mike sent out the draft agenda, and says, anybody wanna, I like that.
Yeah.
Because it shows me the scope of the agenda, does my issue relate, I, I think that's perfect.
Yeah.
And if he doesn't hear anything, but it's a good, it's a tickle.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I would change.
Then it reminds you when the meeting is.
Thank you, Kim used to tell me, and she doesn't anymore.
Oh, we'll, we'll fix that, that's gonna be a policy.
She used to call.
No more policies, the Al Zink policy.
She used to call me on the night before and tell you, no, we gotta meet, she doesn't do it.
I had one, I had one, I was at Panzanella's, and we started at six, and I, I was, I was at Panzanella's, I wasn't coming, I'm like, I'm not coming, I'm at Panzanella's.
Is that an Italian food?
Yeah, well.
They, they serve food, but they mostly serve drinks.
You could've said wrapped beer.
Just get dressed and go. Alright, so I, I think that's, and that's what we're going over more Saturday.
And I think it's, it's all kinds of norms, right, it's that I'm gonna try to get you your, uh, school committee packets. On Fridays, to give you the weekends to read it, the norm within an expectation would be that you'd have, you know, almost a week to be able to read your materials. You can't have a productive, um, discussion at a meeting if you haven't read the materials, so.
That's right.
So, it's incumbent on me to get that out to you, um, in advance, so I, I did this, this time, and I. I was saying we have a meeting on, um, Saturday, next Thursday as well, so I can tell you that I, I won't be able to make that.
Do we have a next day?
Yeah.
The twenty-seventh, right?
Today's the twenty.
No.
Twenty-fifth.
First.
I guess we do.
Oh, I don't. I won't be.
So, so, but, but those are the kinds of things that I think that we can set up, so what, what are our expectations? So, so, but, but those are the kinds of things that I, that we can set up, so what, what are our expectations?
If you keep calling it a school committee, people are gonna realize you're not, you're not from here.
We're, we're fine, we get you.
Thirty years of school committee, it's gonna be something, uh, that's taking me.
Well, you know that Susan's from Massachusetts, she doesn't know anything about.
Barrett, I, you know, I just wanted to thank you, Mike asked me to reach out to you a, a while ago, and I thought it was good, um, Mike as well, to have you meet Susan in person, to have that form of communication open, so thank you for bringing us so much food for thought tonight. And all the, the, the support and encouragement that you give us.
Um, just a couple, couple closing comments. Um, first, as always, thank you for your continued membership in HSBA, you know how much that means to us. Without your local school board paying dues to us, we're not able to come out and provide these sort of services, and policy work and training and whatnot. Um, so, um, Susan, um, open phone line, you call us whenever you need to, if you have questions about, um, you know, our staff attorneys, been practicing law in New Hampshire for about twenty-five years, now twenty-six years. Um, a lot of work with school boards and school districts, so he knows where he knows policies, collective bargaining, like to know law. Um, our director of governmental relations, Nicole Highmark is a former educator.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you've got questions about the Department of Education, about curriculum instruction assessment in New Hampshire, call me cold anytime. Um, I'm free to help out whatever way I can, if I'm not available. Um, my assistant Amanda is top-notch, kick-ass. So she, like, so if you need anything, you can always get in touch with Amanda, and she'll make sure it happens. Um, I know we, I don't know if we got to the full gamut of what we were hoping to talk about, um, tonight, um, I know, Susan, you're gonna be busy getting your feet wet. The board's gonna be busy with other meetings and retreats and whole settings, but like I said, I live in Dover, I live in a ten, fifteen minute ride from here, if you ever want me back to fill in some of the gaps on what we talked about tonight, or talk on other topics, let me know, and I'll, I'll, I'll be here at any time.
That's perfect.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm gonna, and I've been thinking, I'm gonna suggest to the board that I retreat, that you do a little checkup with us
Absolutely.
In three or four months.
Yeah, let me know, let me know.
Say, you know, it's, you, you.
After budget, we'll do it after budget.
It's great to have an objective outsider come in, and I like, I've gotta be honest, I like your, your approach.
Thank you, appreciate that, appreciate that. Um, uh, quick, one last quick note, um, our training calendar, um, we sent that out a week or two ago. Um, it's on, it's on the website, um, all our webinars are free, um, so.
I signed up for a bunch of them for reasons, some, some real interesting ones, so everybody gets that email, and they're, they're at lunch, right, typically?
Yeah, 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 we, we, we do them at noon, we try and do them live, just cause we hope to garner some conversation. Um, and we don't really quote-unquote advertise this, but if you can't tune in at noon, we do archive them.
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah, yeah, if you wanna hear, let me know.
Okay, okay, super.
We don't always add, it's a type of thing, we don't advertise it, cause we want people to tune in live, but if they call and ask, we, we, we can send you the files for it.
Okay.
Um, and, um, and, uh, yeah, so, so that's it, if you have other questions, you know, reach out to us. Um, always appreciate, appreciate the invitation, best of luck, we'll be, we'll be in touch, and let me know what else you need, so.
Well, we'll have to have you back for the right to know form.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so, I'll reach back, and that's a good idea, once, once we came, we have the next few agendas.
Lot of training documents on our, on our website, if you, you know, I know sometimes doing, during the board meeting and stuff, if you have questions about right to know law, Susan, let me know, and you know, you and I can get together some afternoon, over a cup of coffee, and I'm happy to just give you some of the basics and goals and.
And maybe, maybe that's something we could do, like, mid-September two, do a really quick hour right to know, cause I.
I think that would be great, we can say, Jen being new.
Yeah.
It's always good to be abreast of that stuff.
Well, just to understand t- technology now, you know, all that stuff, that's actually, that's one thing we were gonna go over about, yeah.
Thank you, Barrett, thank you.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
It's a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you so much.
Jennifer, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Al, good seeing you again.
You as well.
Thanks for having me out.
Let's take a quick break, and, uh, some people, two hours, so, convenient. I'm sorry, Al.
Telling you.
It was mine, I said, cause he has one.
You did, you said, you said it was his.
He did, look at. So she should get this one, isn't it?
No, I, I.
Thank you.
Come up on the house.
Good to be here.
Okay, that is funny.
That is funny, cause I'm like, no, he brought an orange one in. I'll throw it away.
Hello, young lady.
Hi, Mr. Zink, how are you?
I'm good, how are you? I'm enjoying this.
Hello very much. Oh, yeah, family.
So, yes.
Lots and lots of family.
Oh, I think you said that, right.
Um, crew of five.
We did last, this is it.
Is your, is your break in the, break in period?
We just.
Oh, yes, there's, you know, you can't go over, um, sixteen miles, until you've gone five hundred miles, and there are certain features in the car that'll not be available. The guy suggested that he change from the factory oil to the under-oil.
They got new, they, the school got out.
Oh, wow.
Oh, it's ridiculous, this, this is.
He has.
Yes, he has three key parts, two red.